Today may I be open to others' ideas and beliefs, respectful of our differences, not threatened by them. May I grow in understanding of my own motives, knowing that people often act out of their own fears. May I be a force for replacing fear with insight, helping us all to be patient and kind as we talk. Strength, real strength can always find compromise working together, may we find a common ground. Enable us to move forward with a shared purpose. May we see what is truly important and unites us, focusing on that, to banish roadblocks, the ego and fear today. May I be open to others' ideas and beliefs. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
All right, welcome everybody. Ms. Lepson, will you please take role?
Mr. Bills.
Here.
Mr. Kennedy.
Here.
Mr. Ringgell.
Here.
Ms. Dever. Mr. Thompson.
Here.
Ms. Wattsworth.
Here.
Mayor Jansen.
Here.
We have four of them.
Thank you. Approval of the minutes from September 17th, 2025. Are there any questions or changes?
Welcome to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you. Moving right along. Up next, we have a... Okay, we have a presentation. Mr. Steinbrenner, Villa Hills Longhorns Athletic Association.
Oh, yours.
Presentation.
Well, I had, my choices were public hearings, presentations, oath of office, or promotions, and I'm like, please don't let it be an oath of office. I'm jeans today.
So I'm sure when residents show up, some of you get nervous. I'm not here to talk about any risque Halloween display.
Oh, no. It's too late.
Just so you know. I am Steve Steinbrenner. I'm the president of Villa Hills Longhorns Association. Many of you know us probably. We support 650 boys and girls playing baseball and softball every spring and summer. Nearly all of our games here at Franzen. I wanted to take a couple of minutes, literally two minutes, to put on record our appreciation for the city and specifically a few individuals in the project at Franzen that's, we're putting in a new ball field. If you haven't seen it lately, literally there's a new field there. It's incredible. I think the first one at Franzen in like 30 years. So appreciation for a few individuals. Couple of them are here in the room right now. Scott doesn't want to hear it, but Scott is the best partner we could ever ask for. He's a servant leader. Scott and I worked together for maybe three or four years. About 12 months ago, I called Scott and said, Scott, we have a problem. He's like, uh-oh. I'm like, it's not a bad problem, but it's a problem. We have too many kids for the amount of fields that we have. And Scott did what Scott always does. He put his head down and went to work. I'm sure he aligned many of you guys. He got budget approval. He got resources. And 12 months later, we had a field. So Scott, thank you very much. And I look forward to continue the partnership. He also enrolled guys that moved mountains, like literally mountains and mountains of dirt. And that's Buck and his crew. See if I got it right. Matt, Cory, Matthew, Jake, and the field whisperer, Wayne Slush, right? Buck and his team spent, I don't know, hundreds of van hours bringing in dirt, knocking down trees, bringing in dirt, leveling dirt, and eventually making it look like a ball field. And there's a ball field out there. And that's another hundred, 200 kids that we can get off the couches in spring and summer to let them play ball. So it means a ton. Appreciate it. I'll pass it on. So all I wanted to say was thank you. It's a great partnership. We're honored to be part of Villa Hills. Hopefully onward and upward. So thank you.
And I want to thank council. And again, you guys, this is a big good ode to you all too, because you supported it. So personally, in all my years, this is the kind of thing, it's kind of cool. It was fun to build. It was fun to work with you guys. It was even fun working with you all to get the money. How often is that fun, right? So this is really cool. Thank you. Thank you, Steve. I appreciate this very much.
Thank you.
Buck's guys, I think they had fun kind of doing it too. It's something different for them. This was really cool.
Good project.
Yeah. Buck, are you down to building business with Hill?
It looks like good.
Probably good, yeah. So thank y'all. Appreciate it. Now I'll pass it on to the crew. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Steve.
You have your signs. Put it up there. Just read out them if you want. Thank you, sir. Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
See you, Steve.
Moving right along, reports, please. Chief Paul.
Never need to talk back in.
He must be a stranger.
All right, for the month of September, we had 1,122 calls per service. Okay, so all calls, 57% were to Villa Hills and 43% to Crescent Springs. Again, when it's just dispatch calls, we were... I was corrected yesterday in safety committee meeting. I apologize for the 179,000, comma, 49%. That's 179 calls, 49%. Thank you, Ms. Wattsworth, for pointing that out. I'll make sure I... Safety committee took care of that for me, so I'll make sure I correct that anytime. It was 49% to Villa Hills and 51% to Crescent Springs. For the month, we had 16 crimes, documented 20 traffic collisions, issued 69 citations, 168 courtesy notices for retraffical warnings, 70 call responses, five domestic reports, and three crisis intervention forms as well. Again, that, going back, that is an increased number. That it was been a big push for our recent traffic complaints that we've had. People asking for increased, do you know, police presence and traffic issues, things like that. We're trying to make a dent into the complaints. It's just mattering of where the citations, the arrests were issued there for the month. We had a couple of different locations. Again, it goes across the board. We had, the one that stuck out to me on this is one of our high... So High Street had three type collisions, and that's in that parking plaza where Jimmy John's used to be. We don't really, I mean, we did, we did a fair amount of collisions there. It's a horrible parking lot. But we did have three of them, so that accounted for 14% of our traffic collisions for the month. Had three on 75 South and three on Amsterdam. So that broke down the three different 14% that we have there. But then just scattered across the board. And there's just enough. Criminal investigations. Sergeant Lucas, not too many. He had, she had a callouts for the ARS investigation team. One was in Crescent Springs and one was in Taylor Mill. He handles the primary reports for the ARS investigation team. Works with the fire departments and handles the criminal side of that since that is one of his areas of specialty. So appreciate all of his hard work there. Continued on with some of his other cases that he had. I will make note that we did, we utilized the flock camera system. Currently, two of the five cameras that council approved are up and running in the city and have been useful to the system. We have closed out one case where we charged our suspects with organized crime, conspiracy, and theft. So again, I appreciate council's understanding and the use of that system. And again, Sergeant Lucas for his work with that. Again, it's mattering of things that he's working right now. Does anybody have any particular questions, Chief Paul? Our training for the month, we concentrated on chapter 21 of our house procedures, vehicle stops and felony stops, including videos and gram videos. KI training had 24 hours of training. Our officers, four of our officers attended. There are required 40 hours of training in a variety of different classes, before after deployment, protective drug investigations, narcotics investigation. Again, these are courses that with their assistance, we help pick them, pick for them. But we often, we get their input, because this is where classes that interest them to develop their career path. And again, I think you get more out of a class than instead of, hey, we're just picking one for you. But they get to say, and what kind of training they get to take, what they're required to take. So. Sergeant Goleynonics, again, two weeks. He was spent in training. One was a training week of training and one was in a conference, the KI conference. So he did have only one deployment that was in a narcotic search deployment. So that's why he didn't have a lot, but that's why he had more hours of training than what he normally has. So from those conferences, and that's the breakdown of the training that he had. Our department overtime, we had 11 hours in court, 13 hours of shift coverage, four hours for the fall festival, which was awesome, by the way. A great turnout, great work to everybody that did that. 12 hours of park security. Just so you guys are aware, the, I know you know, the new swing set and system's all up and running. So the way that that worked out is they had to put that special flooring that's up there at the park. The company requested that section B have nobody go on it. So at the direction of Crescent Springs, they asked, they had their public works covered from Friday morning until Monday morning, 24 hours. Tanya, the public works director, asked if we could assist at all. And so we gave them Saturday night off, paid 12 hours of overtime for park security up there, make sure nobody did trample on that property, caused any damage. So we just helped them out, give them a night off for that time. But that's my report.
Chief, I'd like to commend citizens as well as you guys. This chart, first one, the green bars, we asked you to put that in here several years ago. And when you look at the numbers of residents and number of calls, whether it's a small city with 3,000 residents or a large city, you're in the lower quartile of calls for the number of residents. And that, I think that really says a lot for our people, our citizens in both cities, and it says a lot for you guys too. So I mean, that's, that's really good. That's, that's why we asked you to put it in here. And every month it says it. I look at this thing every month. So it's...
It stays pretty consistent, and so that I...
It is. It does.
It's a multi-passed, you know, citizens working with us, us working with citizens. It's, I mean, we can't do without our fellow citizens. Their cooperation as well. So appreciate that.
Chief, can you elaborate on the collision with the kid on the scooter?
I can tell you that the child is in stable condition. It's a current open investigation involving a juvenile. That's what I can tell you.
Where was it?
It was in front of Asporto, LA Fitness. I'm not sure what they're calling it.
So a lot of traffic here.
Clock Tower Road?
It was on Clock Tower Way.
What's a kid on a scooter doing on Clock Tower?
How'd he get there?
What time of day was it?
Probably wouldn't wear a helmet, right?
About six o'clock in the evening. I'm sorry.
If we're not wearing a helmet, or were we?
I am going to refer all questions as it's open investigation.
Okay.
I'm not trying to be tried by any shape or form, but it's, I don't want to hear that.
I see what you're saying.
So, but the, but the good news is, is that the child is stable. It actually happened when he was 13. The very next day, he was, he turned 14, his birthday. So.
Have, have you all gone to the schools as we talked about?
We're working on a program to work with schools because it's, schools initially, some of the schools wanted us to do it grade by grade by grade. And that's a lot of manpower and hours. So I would prefer a, we're working through that. And I kind of want to come up with like a half hour quick little thing, because kids lose attention span pretty quick. To be quite honest with you, I want to be able to do like a whole school assembly kind of a thing, 30 minutes, boom, we got your time, we got your attention, and then move on. So it's still a working process.
Any other questions for the chief?
There was a good article in the Coxville's. That was a good article.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Hopefully, I know, I know it's got a lot of people's attention. I mean, I saw some comments on Facebook and things like that about it. So hopefully it gives them...
It did get our attention, but I've heard a lot of people say stuff to me about them, these scooters, these scooters, these scooters, and...
Trying to help address the issues and start...
Everybody that drives is a little paranoid about it.
And I don't blame you for being paranoid with it as well.
If we wanted to talk about a little bit, well, I know we should probably talk about it more in length later on, but it's like, on a scooter, when you break it, doesn't the kid go flying forward on a scooter?
You can ease it.
You, you...
Sounds like a bicycle.
It absolutely, well, it's like a bicycle, because think about it, if you hit the front brake on a bicycle, it'll come indoors. And you end up going that way. So the braking systems on most of those scooters are rear braking. So physics will tell you that on the rear side of that, just like when you hit the rear brake on a bicycle, your momentum is slowed and starts behind you. So you don't end up going, end over.
I was curious of the maximum speed of those scooters. Some of them...
It varies, but normally most of them are between 19 and 22 miles per minute.
Don't look at that, so we can just on, on a little scooter. I mean, that's go right back.
And before anybody asks, know there's no law that requires them to have common, you've had short paths, anything like that. So there's no law.
Yeah, we had talked about it at mayor's group in last month. And so one of the mayors was going to talk, I think he was going down to KLC and he was going to talk to them, because basically it would require a change in statute in order to be able to do anything with the scooters and to mandate anything, I mean, requirements for them. And I haven't, I haven't talked to him since. So I'm not sure where he got, but...
I'm sure Lexington, Littlewood, having a horrible time.
The, the suggestion that I had made through the Kentucky Association Chiefs of Police was if you're going to consider a law change, perhaps maybe make it a charge to permitting unlawful operation of the scooter, and you can charge the guardian or adult.
Can I ask you a question? Is there reflectors on scooters?
No. Some do, some don't.
Bicycles, all bicycles have reflectors, do they not?
Not, not.
I mean, there's, I mean, they probably start with them, but...
Yeah, and they don't all...
I thought anything on a common road, you know, that has reflectors. Because I see kids at nighttime.
Right.
I mean, a lot of them do.
They're not, just so we're clear, if they're not 16 years of age. And if they are over 16 years of age, they're supposed to have a headlight, taillight, if they're on the road. There's, there's big provisions of KRS-189, 289, that all of these things have to be met in order for it to be on the road.
What time of day did this accident happen?
About six o'clock in the evening, six, six thirty.
Wasn't dark yet.
It was not dark yet.
But it will get dark very soon.
That seems to be, but that's, the lights seem to be the thing that keeps getting like overlooked by just everybody. I mean, it's like, you just, you see all sorts of electric motorcycles, electric dirt bikes, and they're just tooling down the road. And I, I don't, I mean, I'm sure it's not from us not addressing it, but there's only so many of you all. So...
It's a consistent thing. I do know that, unutterably that I made with principals, and I think Villa Madoff is actually moving to Hollywood, moving forward with it, is something else that might help is don't allow them to be ridden to school. That's just a suggestion, because that's where a lot of it's happening. You got a lot of people out in traffic in the morning or in the afternoon at that time. Increase traffic amount, vehicular traffic, increase scooters.
Are you seeing the, the schools?
There are, so, yeah, Villa Madoff.
So people are, kids are riding them to school?
Yep. Electric bikes, electric scooters, when they...
The worst time of traffic.
Well, when the traffic backs out, up on Villa Drive, they go, heads on.
I don't know what they do. Nope.
Trying to, trying to solve it as best we can.
This all boils down to parents parenting like they're supposed to, and they're not.
Amen.
So, you know, to just give your kid a scooter and give them free rein, it's like, you work so hard to raise your kid, then you give them something that could potentially kill them. You know, I...
And then the company's going to be sued.
Cool. Well, I equated to this as well. I know I mentioned this in safety as well. When your young drivers go and get their permit, okay? They're, you know, they obviously are supposed to read the manual, pass a test, written test, right? Well, then what's the requirement to get your intermediate license? Your guardian or your parent has to sign off on 50 hours of daytime driving and 10 hours of nighttime driving for a bare minimum. The parents are teaching them the rules of the road. Same kind of principle here that I...
It's a lot of...
Yeah, education's our only defense right now. I mean, that's, that's just the way that it carries. So.
That's correct.
Ever council meeting you talk about?
Unfortunately, it's going to happen again.
We hope not. But you know, if you want to...
Any other questions for the chief? All right, thank you. Safety committee, Ms. Wattsworth.
Just a few additional things. So a question was brought up about motorcycles going in between lanes on the highway. And of course, it is illegal. And chief said, you know, of course, they can turn on their lights and try to pull them over, but they take off at high speeds, so our force is not going to chase them. And also with the license plate numbers, those plates are small, they flop up and down because they're not secured right, and they can be bent up on purpose. So, you know, really, there's not a lot that can be done unless, you know, there are officers that chase them down, but ours aren't going to do that. Let's see. Question about cell phones in school. New state statute says no. Someone asked about, were we seeing issues with keeping police forces funded in this area? That's not an issue. We, you know, everyone keeps the forces funded. And then chief pointed out, studies show that defunding the police does not result in less crime, it's more crime. And let's see. And then I referred some questions to Buck about, and also the part of valley trails that was redone. And initially, I guess, they had no parking. The question was, would those curbs be painted or whatever? So I contacted Buck, and he's going to meet with the rest. And let's see, force is at 13 by the end of the month. There was a lateral hire working on that. And so by the end of the month, we should be at 14 again. And then interviews will be set up to try and fill the 15th spot. So the next meeting is going to be a special meeting scheduled for November 4th, because the second Tuesday is Veterans Day. So it'll be November 4th at 3:30 in council chambers. And I'll order by group to attend. Are there any questions? We don't have the... No, I'm actually, I talked to someone about that. Chief keeps me on the, like, straight when I try to get me this early, maybe early, and act better and early than in life.
All right. Thank you. A public works committee.
Mayor, calls in today. We're still working on getting the environmental process moving forward. So we're still, still... So the one thing I kind of added is you, so I said last month, we were fucking up this stuff on the bridge down there, walking through. So I decided to have the actual real inspector go down there and make sure you, like, go check it out. So, you know, we have our compass to the road. In here in firm, they have certified bridge inspectors and stuff. They went down there and checked it out, sent you the report. Basically, it's getting to the top. We have to start thinking about what we need to do as far as place, things like that. It's, it's not an emergency situation. It's not something we need to go tear down right now. Oh my God, it's going to fall. But it's, it's time that we need to think about it. So I think if you look on that, the report that I gave you all, some of those things are, were in the past rated as six, and then moved down to be rated five. So one of the things in the written remarks we discussed was basically, you know, six is fine. When you get to five, you're starting to talk about repairing it or replacing it, a better cost effective option. So we're going to talk about that. We're going to have basically just a special public works committee probably next week. We're all just going to get together as a committee with the inspector and just kind of talk it through and say, okay, what are we looking at? Timelines, things like that. So at some point here in the future, it's going to be coming. You know, it's not, like I said, it's not emergency. You don't need to get your reserves and something to go build this thing. So just to kind of let you know that we're, that project's probably coming here in a few years.
Do you even have any ballpark of what that would cost?
No, that's part of what this meeting is going to be about, is what's the, what are our options, basically? It's a big thing we want to find out of. Because he, in the written remarks, they're talking about little, what could be required. You're having to dig out a lot of the things that wants to, you know, I think even in the mucks there, it's part of our moving some vegetation down there to use for water flow. Talked about one thing, under the bridge, the wall is not smooth. So like you've got your two sidewalks, but they're not smooth. Like one comes out to a point, and it's like water's hitting that point, you know, causing turbulence and stuff. That's just kind of help erode that. You know, you're going to have to fall smooth, the water just easily flows past. So, so that's, that's basically where we're at. We're going to talk about our options, kind of talk it through, and then develop a plan and let y'all know what, what the situation is. So. How long is it to fish? I mean, how long is it?
I think it's 30, 40. It's, it's over 38 years. It wasn't there when I was a kid. So you're looking anywhere in the last 50 years that things come in. Because it was, it was cows in a farm. So there really wasn't anything there.
Now, one of the things that we're looking at too, so, you know, we don't know cost yet. That's part of what we're going to figure out. But there are special programs, particularly state Kentucky, actually has a special program, grant program, that each 20 grand for bridge repair. They do basically a rolling, every quarter, they basically allow, you know, they flush it aside, 20-ish million dollars a year, but we want things over, like a rolling deadline every quarter. So there's possibilities you could keep funding there. We, but we got to find out our options, and then we'll kind of go along. Uh, very good projects. Valley Trail Phase 1, pretty much done. I've set for one area, like I said last time, they told me the water, they're going to be doing a, I'm also going to get some striping done. So the prospect point of it, it's done. Others, we just need to do some striping, and that's already been done at one, to try the trails. So since we didn't get the grant for Valley Trails Phase 2 and 3, Valley Trails Phase 2 is on the schedule for 27, 28. So we're going to go ahead and start designing on that. So we have that in our, in our possession. And we'll also talk about if we want to try for a grant again, maybe having the design, like, help our score a little bit. That's, we're going to talk about that, but I, I don't know. I, I kind of have a feeling at this point, we're just not going to have a call, but we're not going to score high enough for a grant to overcome some of the other projects in the North Kentucky area. So we just may have to go on. So the other, I told, told last month about the sinkhole that's on Shore near Amsterdam. That's scheduled to be fixed. That's plates over. So it'll be on there probably a couple of months, but it is covered now and it will be taken care of. Sidewalks, North Kentucky Law District, NSD 1 are getting around. They're not doing it fast, but they are getting their stuff prepared and taking care of it. It's not on us that you have. We contacted our concrete panel replacement company who goes to the concrete panel replacement brothers, also take care of the sidewalks. They're looking to start about Halloween fish. We're hoping we can pass them in there for Halloween. It would be really nice, but, but I don't know if that schedule's working out. And we have knocked out, the grinding isn't on the schedule. They've been contacted. They just haven't been able to get us this kind of third event. They're actually over in, I believe it's...
Burner, if the... Better sure where they're working.
Yeah, they're working, they're working in some cities all around here now. So we'll be next.
How frequently is that done? Because I know it's done by severity. The layers are done by severity. So it's just like once a year, they come in and do it, and then...
Yeah, basically, we've sent out the list to all the residents that were checking that year and say, here's the problems we've noticed. We will fix it for this amount of money, or you can fix it yourself. And some homeowners just go fix it themselves. That's great. Others look into it. I think we even had some homeowners this year, we looked into it themselves and then solved with your charging. No, we just wanted to take care of that. Because we get a much better deal, because like I said, the concrete sidewalk panel replacement, we tie that into our scooter panel replacement contract. So they get, you know, a lot of bulk work. And then the grinding company, you know, there's really one that does a lot of the jobs for all the cities. And we just give them the entire thing. So they're much cheaper for them to just go out and does what they want. So. But residents, you have, some people do fix it themselves. So it's free initiative survey that's going to, we're going to have to update the fire plan. We should have five months. We'll have the actual results. It's been scheming. And then on the agenda tonight is the salt bid. Morton is our volatile supplier. They gave us a 97% for your time. Up a little bit, it's about 10%. Is that right? Yeah, about 10% of our last year, which is not too bad considering, especially they're, they're very good about getting the salt and making salt. So we're going to, 200 or so hung in the bin now, and we have close to store extra. So we're doing good. We'll see what we need by, what's it, we'll fill left hand. So we have all the salt we need. Any other question?
What have you decided about the door?
We're just going, we're waiting to see over the winter, like, how much salt we lose. Yeah, if, if we don't lose hardly any, then I think we're not a bother.
So when you lose it, what is it from? Melt, runoff, or...
Just if, if the storm, the rains blowing inward into the doorway and may...
Just if, if the storm, the rain's blowing inward into the doorway and makes a matter of water and runoff. If we notice that, we'll take a picture, document it.
Is, is the way it's positioned, is, doesn't the rain kind of come to the back of the building? Most of the time.
I don't think it removes, uh, yeah, I don't think so.
And now that we got the fence up.
Yeah.
That's where I think, I, I'm not looking up against Nick or, you know, we got the fence.
What, um, do we have anything in place to keep it from becoming runoff into any of the streams?
No, we don't. I mean, we do, the hillside, which is that amount of earth, um, will allow that, you know, any type of runoff rains does right there. We need additional rain to get it saturated to the, a good amount of earth and to the grass filter it out before it makes it out to the tree.
And given the position, I don't, we really don't think we'll have this, uh, so, I think we'll be all right. But, but we're going to keep an eye on it, just in case we're.
I'd pay attention if the salt bends down, not if I don't get doors on.
Yeah, it's just, it's, it's more cost than it, it kind of gets in the way when you're trying to get salt in the trucks to get it out there. So.
Any other discussion? All right, thank you. Uh, Public Works Director, Mr. Yelton.
Good evening, everybody. So, uh, back on the salt issue, um, we're sitting on an estimate right around three hundred tons. Um, if you want to prove it tonight, if I talk to Craig, we'd like to order another three hundred ton. I think like in November first, we're just at, we're as close to six hundred ton. I think we'll be good, um, all kind of in mother nature. But as of the door, you know, we've got the concrete block there. We put them up because we did not have the fencing up. So we would like to move the block out of the way, you know, and so now it's, uh, I'm not going to say it's safer, but, uh, it's a lot, uh, we'd like, we got, we need to start moving it out of the way so we can get some new salt put in. And we'll keep an eye, keep the back gate shut, et cetera. And try not to keep the wall salted for any kid that may want to try to get in there and incline. We'll keep that a slope. On top of that, Prospect Point, uh, is like a hundred percent done. Me and the engineer, it is minimal walk, actually Valley Trails and Prospect Point. All the sealing at the, uh, the entrances have been sealed. Uh, all the striping has been completed. Uh, the entrance got done with the edge lines. They came back and did that. So, uh, the striping on Buttermont Pike and Dover Re has been completed already. Uh, on top of that, the cross corridor, like you said, we're about two months out. Uh, this, uh, actually, my friend started looking at the plate today. The steel plate has not moved, so it's not a, it's not a issue for anybody's vehicle or anybody following him. But I'll keep an eye on it for any movement. Uh, sidewalk program is in place. Craig gets all the credit for that. He's done a lot of footwork, a lot of phone calls, emails, et cetera. So that's all, um, we got Handy on board. I'm actually meeting him on Monday at the first job over on Collins. I've been dealing with the North Kentucky Water District, KYTC on Poples, on Amsterdam. Uh, branches hanging out of dead trees over on Collins intersection. Uh, so they're monitoring all that, and a bunch of emails back and forth. And other than that, Field Five is running good, and everything runs pretty well. We're ready for winter. We're still training and, uh, ready to, are about, are about ready for winter.
Is there any more water issues on the, you know, when there's like several spots now? Or they've had to cut them off and do, do pipes or something?
There's a lot of water main breaks throughout our city, yeah.
Yeah. That's what water department's saying, too. They've got just projects all over the county that they're trying to keep up with.
Yeah.
So.
Plus, I'm still dealing with homeowners on, uh, just little issue, drainage issue, sinkholes in their backyard, side yard, et cetera. And I'm working with Mike, my water runoff over on, uh, twenty-two, thirty-three Amsterdam. So we're doing that study there. Met with a homeowner a couple of times, and we get back prepared and, uh, and we'll see what happens over there.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you, all part.
Finance, Mr. Bills.
Uh, finance committee met on Monday, October thirteenth. Uh, we discussed the city's ongoing audit, which is a federal audit this year. Um, and just, the target completion date's unknown at this time, but it's estimated for sometime early twenty, twenty-six. Am I right when I say that, Joe? And then we also discussed, Mr. Cahill mentioned that he delivered a check to the city from the fire department that was, I guess, some investment returns that they had when they had gotten the monies. And that was, that check was in a little bit in excess of a hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars. So, um, I think if council remembers, we talked a while ago about possibly rolling that money towards the purchase of a new ambulance or something like that. But, um, Crescent Springs wanted their monies back, so we took our monies back. So we've got those monies now to, to, I guess, utilize as we see fit.
We, we kind of made a promise to the city that we would return the money.
Yeah.
I didn't care whether or not we'd hand you a check and you give it back to us or whatever. But at least wanted to meet the promise, we'd get it back to the city, so.
And we're probably going to maintain our best, you see.
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
Right, yeah. So, um, our, our, kind of, those averages are what, sixty percent in the Crescent Springs?
Sixty-four.
Sixty-four, so. Other than that, uh, we reviewed the financial reports. Uh, we make a motion to council now that those financial reports be accepted as published and posted on the city website with the note that, uh, the financials now can be subject to, due to, subject to changes due to audit. So that's one of the things, clarifications we need to make. So, I'd like to make a motion that, uh, those reports, financial reports, be accepted.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you.
Um, other than that, next meeting is Monday, November seventeenth. All are welcome to join.
Any questions for Mr. Bills? All right. Thank you. Um, admin committee.
The administration committee did not.
Did not meet. All right, thank you. Recreation Committee, Mr. Kennedy.
I think, you know, other than, again, thanking Buck and the guys for what they did to get this turned around so it's ready for next year, it's just, just a blessing. Um, we're getting ready to shut things down for the year now for both ballfields. Um, Sunday, October twenty-sixth, the night of, everything gets shut down. No more sports activities. Buck and the guys will then do the, uh, field maintenance and upkeep that we need to do to meet our lease agreements and keep them closed. So we really won't even have anything, uh, much recreation wise, report till probably February or so. But, um, you know, it's been a good year. It's been active. So many sports going on, it's been hard to keep up with everything, but, uh, it's been good.
Um, just as an, an aside, on the, um, Saturday night, is that, do you talk to the students in January, or?
No, as, well, um, Kathy's run it this year.
Yes.
So, um, Kathy hit me up the last month at the meeting, and she's getting ready to send a letter out, um, in November to the principals announcing the program. And then they will set their time, we've got their schedule of when we need them back. They can pretty much set it up between December, Christmas, holidays, January. So we get it back by, like, the third week in January, so that we can turn it around in two weeks, get Kathy her meeting. And then February, I think it's nineteenth, we have, uh, back at Villa Madonna again. So, it's kind, and she's, and she's running with it all, and.
Okay. I just didn't know when it all rolled out. So that's helpful.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Um, any questions regarding recreation? All right, Fire Authority?
Fire Authority has not met for this month. We do meet Monday, six P.M. at the firehouse. I do want to sort of, uh, expand on what I've told you so far about where we are with the financing and issues going on with expense. Uh, expenses are a little out of control right now. Um, just to give you an idea of what we're talking about with the headcount issues, the month of September, one year ago, our payroll was thirty-two thousand dollars. Jim, this month, told me it's seventy-five thousand. The reason for that is overtime. And I want to explain exactly what's happening with the overtime itself. So we have our eight full-time people. The most of September was those eight people being paid overtime. And the reason for those eight people and what, whereas everybody else, the problem is, is that we have seventeen employees that are volunteers that work for other fire departments. Every, every fire department in Northern Kentucky is struggling to keep people on board. They're all going to overtime. So when they're in overtime, they can't come take care of our needs. We have fourteen volunteers that pretty much just don't show. So they may come one run out of three or four months. They may do an eight to four during the week, but nobody wants to work weekends. I mean, it's not that bad. Uh, Jeff has says that, even if, we've, we've been trying to talk alternatives. We said, what if we hired two more people? Would that offset some of this overtime and get us, you know? We're talking people who make seventy-five thousand a year at time and a half an hour. It's, it's big bucks, okay? He says you can't even find the people. Nobody's enrolling in schools. Cincinnati's having the same problem, all in Northern Kentucky. Some of the fire departments, Fort Mitchell's been doing it, where when they don't have enough people come in, they're shutting down one of their ambulances. We're doing everything we can not to do that, because that's not serving the public. Plus, it has a trickle effect, is if we shut down one of our ambulances because we have a money problem, what that does is put some other city in a mutual aid situation. Now, we're doing some of that mutual aid for other cities that are having the problems. But we ran into this problem nearly ten years ago with Bromley. And at the time, it was, there was no neutrality. They weren't providing anything in return. So everybody right now is doing a fair share. You know, I'm covering when you have a problem, whether it's equipment problem or headcount problem. But before it was, your, your plan is you're going to save money and have us cover you. We're not going to do that. But we're also, the board has not been in the opinion that we want to pull an ambulance. It's just, you know, we have twelve thousand people. It's not far fetched that you got two runs within an hour's time, easy. And it, it happens quite a lot. We've had three runs at one time and had to still have mutual aid. So, uh, again, I just want to let you all know what's going on, and I'm sure he's having the same problems with the police. I mean, we're just not getting people, these professions, it's like, that's not their choice. And it's getting tough.
I have a question. So if you wanted to become a paid fireman, what do you have to do to become one?
Well, you have to be certified. You have to go through a program. And then you have to be certified by a state. Um, and then, of course, you probably got your plethora of options about where you want to go work. And I've told you all before that it used to be, even within my terms here, we had volunteers, they would be your sons and daughters who were parents of people who worked, they were all coming in and, we have virtually nobody left in our cities working at a fire park. We have some fifty-year guys that are still hanging on, not showing up a lot anymore, but they've put their fifty years in. We don't have a lot of young people.
So, and that's what you have to do to become a paid person? That's like quite a, is it just like the EMTs?
Yeah, well, you got, there's firefighting training, there's EMT training, there's paramedic. It depends on what you want. And we have two types of position, an EMT firefighter, and then we have paramedics. So, you know, they're both different training levels. Um, and we will even work with them, send them to school if they sign, you know, a contract to stay on with us afterwards. We're doing all sorts of options. But none of them are working.
Because it seems like that you're not having to pay huge tuition to go to college, and you're coming out, like, what is a starting?
We're paying seventy-five thousand.
As a starting, so.
For, yeah, for a twenty-one, twenty-two-year-old kid coming out. That's good bucks.
Is there incentive programs in high schools, or?
We don't really.
Not, that I'm aware of.
You know, make a career?
Well, they used to, with the volunteer programs, they used to have programs in the fire department where, you know, high school kids could come in and they would sort of, you would learn as you go type of thing. Um, but kids aren't even, they're not choosing.
That's crazy.
Yeah, but that's the situation, so.
More than I made when I maxed out.
Yeah.
The teaching scales.
You're talking good money, but it's just, it's not the interest. So it's, it's causing problems. And like I said, when, when the only people you can get are the ones you're already paying and kind of locked in on your own program, and then you're paying time and a half, it's, it's blowing the bank. So, you know, we're, we're looking at several different options, and which is, if we can find additional people, maybe we're going to have to. We're right now, sort of, with our, the, the police department, we're sort of in the middle of where we're paying people, but we may have to go up. And, uh, it's just going to, it's going to cost money.
So notoriously, like, when I look at Kentucky and I look at all the counties and all the cities and all the, is there, is, is the league of cities, do they provide anything with regards to, like, number of ambulances, run rates, you know, paramedics versus EMTs versus, is there anything that they use with regards to, like, utilization? Because I know that we're pretty busy as, as, as far as the ambulances go, probably because of Villa Madonna, we, we have a lot. We have a heavy group in a calls, yeah.
It does drive a lot.
Yeah. But I'm just thinking, like, you know, is, is Fort Mitchell sitting, and, and ours are sitting, and somebody else's are sitting? And it, and again, with the mutual aid part, that, that may be, that may be part of it. Sister cities may be mutualizing, but I guess I'm trying to look at, like, utilization, um, you know? What's idle time on something where?
Yeah, right, um, I know that Jeff files reports with the state, probably just like Chief does here, for the police. They, the state has it. I don't know, um, how readily available that is to us, but it, it would be public, but I don't, I've not seen anything, how they're, how they're doing. But like I said, there are, there are departments that at time, whenever you put out a call, somebody, it could be one, two, three, four different cities that are in the option list to come, come help us. And we really haven't run into a problem where we can't. But that utilization is being sort of zapped out by the number of, lack of runs that you have in your own city, and you need somebody else to cover. I mean, they're all sort of weaving and bobbing around, so.
And mutual aid is really geographically driven?
Uh, the mutual aid program that we have actually includes all of Cincinnati area.
Oh, really?
As well as, I think the program we just signed in the last month gives us the ability to provide mutual aid, or anyone, the state mutual aid, to us and for anyone. So if there's a flood down in Kentucky, or something happens, hurricane, tornadoes, whatever, um, we can go down, send our people down there mutually.
Okay. Interesting. So is it going to be probably like?
Uh, when we do the budgets with the police, that's probably what we're going to have to do for firemen as well.
Well, yeah, so we're, you know, again, Jim Cahill's looking at options right now. Our meeting Monday, this is, this is going to be the topic of discussion. We're trying to come up with any options that we can, and then see what we can do to implement them. Of course, we're good with the budget we have that's in place till June thirtieth. But at this rate, we're going to come up short. And there's, there's just no doubt about it. He's already looking to prepare the next year budget that has to be pretty much ready in January to start talking to the city's finance groups. So, you know, it's, it's kind of a non-stop thing. It's the problem, and then it's next year's problem already. Anyway, that's, that's all I have, if that isn't enough.
Any other questions from the story, Joe? All right, thank you. Uh, City Attorney, Mr. Stewart, do you have anything for us?
Uh, might do not have a report.
City Court, Ms. Lutzen?
Um, just, uh, briefly, the tax bills are coming in. We're about, I think it was nineteen percent that I figured that we've collected so far. Um, we have not gotten our two biggest mortgage companies yet. When they hit, then, you know, that's when the numbers jump drastically. Um, but, um, yeah, everything's going good so far.
Okay, great. City Minister, Mr. Bowman?
Thank you, Your Honor. My two, you know, things briefly. One is, uh, we did get the, uh, contract authorization, so I'm just, um, precision for the concrete grinding work, uh, today. Uh, and, uh, that was signed and sent down to them. Uh, do not have a start date yet, but we're a step closer on that one. And then I, I just want to take a moment, and I really want to thank my department heads and my next level supervisors, both specialty, uh, City Department for Lutzen. Uh, we were asked to revamp our fixed asset schedule, uh, for the city that had not, it had been adjusted every year for audit, but it had not really been going over the front to home in probably a decade. And so we took the time on last week to do that, and Jennifer did most of the bulk of that work. The department has come in, sat down, and gave us the information, but then she put it together. And I really want to thank her and, and everybody, the staff, all for their hard work, and appreciation I gave them that done. Uh, the downside of that is it's probably going to result in somewhere like, rather, or, uh, adjustment somewhere along the line. Um, but that is not due to our county groups, just due to us updating our information and then having to. I did want to go ahead and share that. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Bowman? All right, thanks. I only have a couple things to report. Um, there's mayor's group meeting this Saturday. I think I sent out an email, if anybody is interested.
You did hear, here?
Uh, no, it's at the fire.
Firehouse, okay.
The fall festival went well. I want to thank Karen for all the work that she did. Um, and then everything, the weather was great, couldn't have been better, so got a lot of compliments, so. And Karen was very much involved in that, as well as Crescent Springs, it was a partnership that I think really worked well. And thank everybody involved, including the public works from both.
And thank everybody involved, including the Public Works from both cities to get everything set up. Upcoming events, we have on November 14th, from 6:00 to 10:00, we have the benefit for Shop With A Cop and Firefighter. We have a bourbon tasting over at the Civic Club. It's from 6:00 to 10:00. You can register on the city webpage. Is it also available on Facebook? It might be available on Facebook, okay. And then when is the, what is it, October 23rd is the Chipotle fundraiser?
Yes, October 23rd proceeds, there was a code that I put on Facebook for PD page of the city, shared it as well. If you order Chipotle, then we get a certain percentage of proceeds back that goes to Shop With A Cop.
Yeah, that's great. And was that Isaacs, Officer Isaacs spearheaded that? So that was a great addition to everything. And then also, December 6th, Christmas in the Park, at Crescent Springs Park. Hoping for good weather with that as well, so. Details will follow. And then I have nothing else to report, as far as I remember. But, any questions? All right, thank you. We are going to move on to legislation. Ms. Stewart?
Okay, so tonight you have for legislation, you've got second reading and approval of draft ordinance 2025K, an ordinance of the city of Villa Hills in Catton County, amending table 4.04 of the Villa Hills zoning code. And did you want to address that?
Sure. So as you recall, we submitted an amendment to the planning commission to allow for residential facilities and residential settlements in order to comply with state law. The planning commission got approval for the recommendation, and so we are now in justice of the nation area.
And this is the second reading, so we'll need a motion and a second.
I'll second.
And then chair. And then we'll need to take role, Slipstone.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Bills?
Yes.
Mr. Ringo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
And Ms. Watchworth?
Yes.
Thank you. Next item is discussion and approval of draft municipal order 2025K. A municipal order of the city of Villa Hills in Catton County, amending the map for the lease agreement with Villa Hills Civic Club. This is just following up on the earlier presentations. This amends the map for the lease with the Civic Club to include the area M Field Five as city's responsibility with addition of the new field.
So we're adding about one eighth of what the current map showed, additional property that was back in the woods where the batting cage and the field is. So we're just, Craig has added that on to the map. And if you all approve that tonight, we will then move that over to Civic Club for them to approve as well. So I make a motion to approve it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, thank you.
When you sign that, would you mind sending me a copy of that electronically so I can look over to you? Thank you.
The next item is discussion and approval of draft municipal order 2025L. A municipal order of the city of Villa Hills in Catton County, accepting the bid of Morton Salt Inc. for the purchase of sodium chloride road salt at the price of $97.23 per ton delivered for fiscal year 2025, 2026. And authorizing the use of Compass Minerals as a backup supplier for the, using the county's salt bid. And I think Craig's already talked about the salt bid.
So explain to me if the backup bid is $10 lower than the primary bid, why is the primary one the one you're choosing?
All right, great question. It's sometimes not always the lowest bid, but it's the best, most responsive bid.
Okay.
And Morton's facilities are easier for us to access if we need to. We also have a very long-term relationship with Morton, which has come into play in some very bad winters where we have been able to receive salt when other communities were caught.
Okay, good enough.
And so we'd like to keep that relationship nice and tight.
Good enough.
Any other questions? Do I have a motion to approve? Do we have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. And I believe that was everything for legislation. Is there any old business anybody wants to talk about?
Craig, one question, did we get a check already from Longhorns for the pathway? $18,900-ish?
I have not received anything from them.
They have copies of the bills and they were going to get, they're waiting for money from the Reds that they're owed every year. But anyway, they're $18,900 with the pathway that they pay for. And they're, we're waiting for the check thrown out, so.
Okay. Any other old business? Any new business? Actually forgot Halloween 31st from, I think it's 6:00 to 8:00, I believe. It's a Friday, it's a Friday. So watch out for scooters and electric bikes.
Scooter weeners?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah. They just go through the, make a big circuit.
I will say, I, a darling seventh grader asked me yesterday if I liked any of the unpopular candies because he gets the unpopular candies away. I was like, oh, I'm going to get Blackberry.
You're going to get those peanut butter ones with the orange and black, that's what you're getting.
It was just so funny the way he said it. I was like.
Just going to get those orange peanuts that hurt your teeth.
You want me to take my leftovers?
It's nice he's thinking about you.
I didn't share it with all of you at the November council.
Oh, great. Got a camera?
All the unpopular candies.
Any other new business? Any general comments from council and staff? Public comments?
Nope.
Okay. So I have a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you, everyone. Have a good month.